All right, we'll call this public hearing to order at 7:01. Thank you all for coming on this glorious spring day. I would like to ask you if you have any questions to please hold off until after the presentation has been made. And when you speak, there should be a button on the little microphone box in front of you. If you hit it and you speak, it should pick your voice up. And if you could please put your name and address for...
The record.
The record, thank you. All right. And with that, I'll hand it over to Mr. Conley.
Great, thank you. Good evening and welcome to the FY17 budget public hearing. We're going to cover several topics during tonight's presentation. First off, I just wanted to say from the outset that the budget being presented this evening is actually about $529,683 of us than it was during the original budget proposal, which was presented on March 7th. We're going to walk through and highlight what some of those changes have been during tonight's presentation. But essentially, what's before the committee and the community this evening is a budget request that's about 4.3% higher than the FY16, the existing appropriation, down from what was originally 6.2%. During tonight's presentation, I'm going to cover several topics. I'm going to touch upon the various revenue sources of the school budget. I'm going to discuss some of the key budget drivers of the school budget. I want to get into the numbers and talk about some of the major expense categories that's certainly driving the school budget. We're going to touch upon enrollment and look at enrollment projections and look at how that's impacting the numbers of the budget moving forward. We're going to discuss some new positions and staffing changes that are reflected in the budget. We're going to discuss some of a proposal that would increase a few of the user fees as well as a new proposal, a new fee being proposed, so we're going to talk a little bit in detail about that later in the presentation. We're going to look at the various revenue offsets that go into the school budget. So we do rely on revolving grant offsets, and we're going to look at those in detail. As I said, we're going to review the changes in detail from our original budget requests to the budget that's before you this evening. And we're going to end by looking at the key next steps in the budget process. And I do want to just mention that the budget is posted on the school website as of this afternoon, so if you do want to access the budget presentation, as well as all the documents that follow throughout the process and the budget development process are on the district administration website under the business office under the link for budget. So starting with the funding sources of the school budget, as always, the largest revenue source is local taxes. Consistently, it's made up over 70% of our revenue comes from local taxes. State aid, local receipts, fees, and grants that I spoke of earlier make up the remaining revenue sources. North Reading has not had a sizable increase in state aid since, I believe, fiscal year 2010, so state aid along with many of these other revenue sources have been flat and almost fixed for a number of years. And with local tax revenue capped at 2.5%, and the other revenue sources being flat, it does present some budget challenges and, you know, somewhat of an instructional, you know, revenue issue when funding school and town budgets. Fixed costs, which are generally made up of health insurance, liability insurance, regional school assessment costs, have been at a rise of almost double the amount of our revenue coming in. So it does present a challenge from the outset when we're developing both a school and a town budget. There are five major budget drivers driving the fiscal '17 budget. The first is the contractual salary obligations. Salaries represent 83.7% of our total budget request, so they're always one of the largest drivers of a school budget. These are the contractual step, lane, in some cases longevity, and cost of living increases for school personnel. They represent almost 2.7% of our, of an increase in our total 4.3% increase reflected in our FY17 budget request, so it's certainly a large driver of this, of this budget proposal. The second driver is NRPS 2021, and what that is, is it's the district's new strategic plan. The administrative team has worked diligently over the last eight to nine months to create a new vision to guide North Reading's educational objectives over the next five years. The plan focuses on three main strategy areas: teaching and learning initiatives, student support services, and technology integration. Reflected in the FY17 budget, which we'll hear from in more detail later in the presentation, are three positions totaling $185,592. The third driver is operational fixed costs. We have some additional challenges that are certainly impacting the development of the FY17 budget in their range of, in the area of fixed costs, in particular, busing contract. We had to, we are required to go out to bid every three years, and the existing contract expires on the June 30th, so we have gone out to bid and the, there's been a shift in the busing market with rates, and we have seen a sizable increase in our daily rates for busing, so we've had to make adjustments accordingly. There are also other utility increases, the cost of, you know, water, electricity, gas, all those things factor into the school budget and we have to make adjustments accordingly. So that's certainly a big factor of this year's budget. Special education costs, again, a driver of this year's budget. Funds needed to support anticipated out-of-district tuitions and transportation costs are expected to increase in fiscal '17. The FY17 existing budget included outside placements and transportation costs for 30 students. The FY17 budget anticipates this model will need to increase by three students, and we anticipate having a total of 33 students in outside placements. This is a result of really a combination of things, in some cases, new students moving into North Reading, as well as the need to meet the needs of existing students. District has continued to evaluate its special education programs, and where appropriate, has reallocated current resources to provide additional student support services, in particular, increased social emotional support for students. These programs help assist with reducing the potential need for outside placements. And to that end, the FY17 budget proposal also includes three new special education positions: two teachers and one paraprofessional. You'll hear more about these positions a little bit later in the presentation. The last driver is the new, new fees and user fee increases. Certainly, you know, don't look at adding or increasing user fees lightly, and certainly something that we don't want to be speaking about this evening, having to consider increasing user fees to certainly the community and parents as well as with potential new fee. So we certainly is not, certainly not anything that we don't do with a lot of thought, discussion, and certainly hesitation, but the revised FY17 budget proposal being presented this evening does include a new student parking fee as well as some increases in some other fees that would add an estimated revenue of an additional $127,000. Revenue from these sources have been flat for a number of years, and this increase represents the first major increase of fees for several years, I think dating back to September of 2009. So getting into the numbers and the major budget categories, we do look at obviously salaries, instructional expenses, operations and maintenance, building grounds department, utilities, transportation, both regular, special education are all reflected in the number on this chart, as well as out-of-district tuitions as well. So as you can see, I think some of the drivers that I just spoke of earlier are at play when we look at the percent increases reflected in this chart. So for example, salaries up 4%, and that's really a result of the contractual obligations and some new positions resulted from both special education program transition needs and some of the initiatives driven by our strategic plan. Instructional expenses only up a modest 1.9%. We have once again made the decision or a proposal in this revised request to level fund expense budgets for the school budgets and department budgets, that those expense budgets are really the instructional materials, the instructional supplies that, you know, bring materials into the classroom, textbooks, and et cetera. So we are now on, I believe, our 10th consecutive year of level funding those budgets, and we really hope that we would be able to restore those budgets to prior year levels, I think going back to fiscal '14, because in fiscal '15, we did experience a reduction. But in looking at the reality of the funding, we have made the decision to level fund those expense budgets for another year. Operations and maintenance costs only up a modest 0.8%. I talked a little bit about the need to address some utility costs and those fixed costs that are on the rise. Partly of why this increase is as modest as it is is because some of the user fee increases that I spoke of are helping offset, you know, that cost from being a larger number. Transportation, you can see, a big driver in this budget is some of the challenges around transportation, that's the regular transportation contract as well as special education, the need to transport students outside the district, as well as deal with the increase in contractual rates is certainly increasing significantly, and you can see that's a big increase, as well as the out-of-district tuition number that I spoke of earlier. So you can certainly see a lot of the drivers at play by looking at these numbers. Here's a quick pie chart that, you know, shows you where the money is being spent in these major categories. It's not surprising that salaries represent over 83% and 83.7% of our budget. That is a very common statistic, not only in North Reading but across the state and throughout Massachusetts and in school districts. You're going to see the majority of over 80% of this expense is a personnel-related. The next largest item is the, is special education at 5.8% and operations and maintenance at 5.7, and then there's those instructional expenses at 3.7, rounded out by transportation at 1.2. So these percent stats are very common and have been very consistent with prior year budgets. When we look at comparison to our curricular spending and how North Reading compares to the state average, the DSC does a great job publishing this data on their website, and they recently released the fiscal 2015, which is a little bit behind, so we're in fiscal 16 currently, so the data is based on spending levels a year ago, last fiscal year. And as you can see, we've compared to the state in almost every major expenditure category, North Reading is below the state average. Our total curricular spending share is $14,137, where the state average is $14,092. So we are over 5% lower than the state average in curricular spending, so I think what this does show you is that North Reading continues to provide a high quality education at lower spending levels in North Reading when compared to the state. I think the clear point is that we are not certainly overspending in North Reading, and we continue to do a lot with the funding levels that we receive. When we look at enrollment projections, so the dark, you know, green are actuals, you can see we've got a slight decline since fiscal 2014, and the blue eye bar charts are projections over the next six years. District-wide enrollment is projected to decline slightly, as you can see on the right of the chart, over the next five years, but it's certainly fluctuating between levels. So when we look at elementary levels compared to grade five, over the next five years, that enrollment is forecasted to remain relatively stable. It is anticipated that the middle school, grade six through eight, will see the largest decline in the near future, over the next three years, where enrollment could decrease by as much as 73 students between fiscal 16 and fiscal, you know, 2019. The high school enrollment is expected to remain above 800, so right now, high school enrollment is around 802 students. We reached higher than 800 students for the first time in several, several years, and enrollment is expected to stay high through the next two fiscal years, fiscal 18 and fiscal 19. We're not anticipating to see a decline until we get about three years out, where we expect it to go from about 800 to 750 students. However, I will note that it's always very likely when you look at enrollment projections longer than three years, five years out, that these patterns, you know, typically will not last as long, you know, longer as, as long as three years or five years. There is certainly evidence that the economy and real estate market is improving, and certainly in migration with families with school-aged children are moving back to North Reading. There is also evidence that this is the case with increases in homes being sold and new homes being built. So all those changes will impact the enrollment projections when we look beyond three and We wanted to take a moment because it was a big focus certainly in budget discussions last year, and it continues to be a focus this year, and within our high school class sizes, as their high school is certainly dealing with that bubble moving into the high school these last couple of years, and as well as what's projected to be over the next two years, you know, some of the stats that we're also seeing that are impacting high school enrollment is the ratio of students that are moving on from eighth grade to ninth grade, remaining in North Reading and continuing in, you know, attending North Reading High School has significantly declined. So we're seeing the majority of our students, you know, attend North Reading High School as they transition from the middle school to the high school. At one time, several years ago, we had seen a large, about 12 to 13, 14%, you know, drop off or decline, and that now numbers down to a 5-6% range. So we certainly, you know, have looked at the high school class sizes. The highlighted blue chart represents class sizes 24 or greater. So what these numbers represent and illustrate is that 43% of the classes currently offered at the high school have class sizes 24 or greater. 27% of these classes currently have class sizes 27 or greater. The majority of these classes with these, you know, higher class sizes are core subject areas and also advanced placement courses. 10 of the 22 advanced placement classes currently have 24 or more students. These are certainly better ratios than they were last year. As the FY16 budget, we certainly made huge strides in addressing the class size issue at the high school. We added 2.8 instructional FTE at the high school this fiscal year, and, you know, so they're certainly better ratios, and we have proposed as part of our NRPS 2021 strategic planning request, an additional teacher at the high school, which will help further address class sizes at the high school. So the next several, few slides do focus on staffing and some of the new requests in our FY17 budget, and the highest priority of those, what we really consider in a level service request, are three key positions that are related to special education program, you know, transitions. This increased staffing certainly needed at the middle school is a proposed, you know, new, new teacher in the pathways program at the middle school. We have students transitioning in grade five that are involved in the pathways program that is necessary to add a special education teacher. There are students in the eighth grade at middle school that are part of what we call the connection program, and will be transitioning to the high school. And this will require an additional special education teacher and paraprofessional to support the needs of these students at the high school. So we see these as really key, three key positions. It is, we've done some analysis, and by looking at the numbers, it is certainly a fair assumption to say that if we fail to add the above positions, that we most likely lead to additional students needing to be placed in programs outside of the district, thus increasing the out-of-district placement costs. So it is certainly very important that we, we continue with these programs and continue to support the needs of these students that are being educated in North Reading. When we look at our strategic plan, NRPS 2021, we, at one point, had six positions being requested. We have narrowed that to release three very high priority positions. The first addresses the strategy area of teaching and learning, and the academic teacher will help the high school maintain education with center class sizes and allow for a continuation of the ground academic program that includes courses of high student interest. The special education teacher at, was at the high school will also address the student support service initiative, and this position will help reduce class sizes in co-taught classes, and reduce, reduced class sizes will allow for more personalized instructions and thus enhanced learning. And then the school psychologist at the middle school will allow the district to better and earlier meet the increasing social emotional needs of our students. All in all, these three positions represent a total cost of $185,592, which represents an overall increase of 0.7% to the FY17 budget. So certainly, these are high priority positions that are reflected in our PS21 plan. We have made some staffing reductions and some changes. We are reducing our staffing by 1.5 FTE, and those positions are reflected on this chart. We have restructured the building and grounds department, and shifted some expenses with salaries to contracted services, which I'll speak to a little bit more detail later in the presentation. Thus, you know, a cost saving measure has eliminated the age-back technician position. We have discussed in detail in March 21st, a sweeping meeting, a plan to move to a hybrid, combined full and half-day kindergarten model at the Little Elementary School. A byproduct of that decision is involved in the budget total savings of $30,000. So in summary, the staffing changes proposed in the fiscal 2017 budget, we certainly feel the highest priority, as I mentioned earlier, are the three special education positions. The next priority are the NRPS positions. Next priority are the NRPS 2021 positions, and then there, you know, we have a staffing reduction that I spoke of. So all in all, the total cost impact of all the FTE changes is a net 1.5 of FTE, which represents a 0.85% increase of the total 4.3% budget request. I spoke a little bit about a restructuring on the building and grounds department, and we have done a lot of analysis of the needs of that department, and certainly looking at the needs of this new beautiful high school and middle school campus. And we certainly feel that is, you know, this campus has really changed a lot how this department functions and how this department operates, and we feel there, and there is a need for new, new service contracts. There's a lot of age-back and rooftop equipment, certainly equipped on top of this building, as well as all the other schools. There's a highly technical energy management service contract, energy management system that to run and regulate and balance the system, certainly in this building and certainly the other buildings across the district. There are new landscaping needs to update this, this campus, as well as, you know, all the schools. So we feel that there's a need to institute some service contracts to adequately maintain not only this campus but the, the other elementary schools across the district, and we are proposing to implement these new contracts, and thus are eliminating a existing position, the age-back technician position. All in all, these changes represent actually $10,540 savings to the budget. We had originally proposed an additional custodian at the high school middle school at this campus to certainly meet the, the cleaning needs of this, of this building. The revised proposal, one part of that reduction I spoke about at the beginning that you'll see in the amendment, is to hold off on that request, but still move forward with the other restructuring needs I just spoke of.
Might be adjusted a little bit, kind of, really reverbing that.
Yeah, it's loud. Sure. I think you don't need to talk as close to it. It might, it might pick you up like that.
Great. Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. So the proposed new user fees and changes, I know there's been a lot of discussion, is that better? The proposed new user fees and changes, I know it's been a big discussion by members of the school committee and certainly over the last, during the budget development process. So there are, you know, three existing user fee increases that are part of the FY17 budget, one of which is the bus user fee. So there is a proposal to increase that fee from what is existing at $300 to $400, and from a family cap of $500 to $650, which would bring in additional $45,000. Just want to be clear that, and kind of take a moment to explain how our busing program works. First off, we are required by law to bus students for free who reside greater than two miles away from the school, who are in brains kindergarten through grade six. All other families who want busing pay the user fee and receive a bus pass. Currently, we have about 10 buses that we operate daily to meet the, the needs and the interests of the, in the busing program, five of which meet the demand of the students who qualify for free busing, and five of which meet the demand of the students who opt to pay the fee and participate in the optional busing program. You know, under the new contract, it will cost the district a little over $58,000 a bus, so the proposed increase will help the district capture an additional $45,000 a year to help keep the optional busing program as self-supportive. So that really is our goal, to keep the, the families and the students that are participating in an optional busing program as self-supportive as we can. And unfortunately, given the shift in the market and the increase in those rates, as I spoke of earlier, there are a few factors driving those rates up, one of which is the Affordable Healthcare Act. You know, another is, you know, there's new sick day law in Massachusetts, there's a shortage of bus drivers, need to pay prevailing wage, so there's a lot of factors at play over the last three years. Three years ago, the going rate per bus was in the $280 range. Districts that were going out to bid are now seeing rates in the $320, $325 range. So we've had to make some adjustments, you know, in the FY17 budget process to meet the, the new contract, and part of that user fee increase, although we don't want to do it, is will help keep that additional, the optional busing program as self-supportive as we can. The athletic user fee, there's a proposal to increase the third sport from what is currently $100 to $200, and the family cap, which is currently $1,200 to $1,300. This will add an estimated additional revenue of $10,000. We have not increased the athletic user fee since September of 2009. There's a proposal to increase the extracurricular middle school high school fee, which is currently $125 to $200, which we feel would net an additional $27,000 in revenue. We have not, since we reintroduced this fee in 2006, it has not increased since, since 2006. The final proposal would add a student parking fee at the high school. Again, certainly by no means is this something that we really, you know, want to do, but we look at the situation that we're in when trying to balance the budget, and this is a fee that would generate an additional $45,000 in revenue. There are many other districts that do have a student parking fee, you know, across Massachusetts, and we can certainly look at some of that data a little bit later. I talked a little bit earlier in the beginning of the presentation, I did want to just spend a moment, kind of itemizing and going through in a little bit more detail, some of the changes of our budget that we had preliminary presented on March 7th. So we rolled out a preliminary budget proposal on March 7th. That was a $29,195,372 budget, it was a 6.2% increase. Since that proposal was presented, we, since we had a school committee budget workshop, we've continued to meet with members of the town and town officials and finance committee and so forth, and we have worked at balancing the, the budget and where, I'll talk a little bit more in detail where, where we're at. But there was certainly a need to, to make some reductions of that original proposal, so we have reduced our NRPS 2021 request by three FTE positions totaling $221,263. There were two coordinator and, an elementary coordinator and a secondary coordinator positions that we had hoped to, you know, introduce as part of our NRPS 2021 positions. This plan would delay the, that initiative. There was also a digital learning paraprofessional as part of our technology integration initiative and our digital learning model that we were attempting to introduce. This would delay that, that position as well. We had proposed some secretarial increases in the central office mainly, mainly a receptionist and some other... and some other increases, which we would, we have eliminated from this proposal. I spoke earlier, we were trying to introduce a new middle school, high school custodian position as part of that restructuring and try to meet, you know, we've done a lot of analysis looking at the industry standard cleaning levels, and we're certainly trying to maintain all of our school campuses adequately, and that request has been put on hold. I talked earlier, talked about the kindergarten hybrid model and the move to that at the Little Elementary School, and as a, you know, a byproduct was a reduction of a 0.5 FTE position. Some of these other increases, a reduction of a new head wrestling coach, there's really, we had proposed that originally, unsure if the co-op, wrestling co-op program would continue, but we now know that it is, so it's not needed to carry that amount in the budget. The new user fee increases I just spoke of, the athletic, extracurricular and parking, those were the new increases. The bus was already part of the original proposal. That netted an additional $82,000 of revenue. This next item, what I call discretionary budget reductions, those are just us taking a hard look at some of our budget line items. One is with this, which was food service offset, so helping support a food service program in the general fund. Other was utilities, and we were attempting to restore equipment and small capital line items. We've backed off on those requests by a total of $45,000. And then the last item here is the item I spoke of a little bit earlier, was we decided to level fund expense budgets, and that equaled about $57,449. So a little bit of detail here, but that's the changes we have made, and now we are at a budget request of $28,665,689. I want to look at that a little more detail. So that increase is a little over, you know, $1.1 million, at 4.3%. I spoke of earlier, I wanted to get a little bit more in detail about our offsets. I know that's always a confusing thing to the community of what, we have our general fund request, but we also have a lot more expenses generated by the user fees and the revenue, which we, which all are deposited into revolving accounts, which directly offset our expenses. As well as we are, we do receive federal state grants. And so those in total, it represents an additional $2.5 million if you total the grants and the revolving accounts. So, our total school funds is really over $31 million, $31,165,689. Which oftentimes is not always seen in the equation, but something we wanted to reference and speak of tonight, is the various school committee, you know, donations that we accept at each meeting. Those have been coming in regularly, you know, throughout this school year. Those are donations mainly by our booster groups, our support groups, our parent organizations. And in a lot of ways, we couldn't do what we do every, every day, and the principals without that additional funding, and we think that's annually estimated at around $90,000. And we also look at the various parent organizations and parent associations and the PTOs at each school, and the budgets and the enrichment programs and the field trips and the activities and the various, you know, expenses they support, which we think is estimated around $60,000. So, there's another $150,000 there, it's not always captured in, in these, in the various accounts that certainly exist that we, you know, couldn't do what we do every day without it. I wanted to also take a little bit of a moment, looking at some of these programs that we do charge fees for, and look at, you know, what the actual costs are and the annual revenue that we do take in from the user fee, and what is, what the percentage of that revenue that we rely on to offset that cost is. I think in most cases, when you look at the various programs and the fees that we charge and the revenue that's coming in, in most cases, that revenue generated from the fee is less than about 50% of the actual annual cost. So I spoke of the bus transportation, this is the regular transportation account, you know, the non-special education, this is the new contract. We spend a total of $613,175. With the proposed increase, we would bring in about $275,000 annually, which is about 45% of that cost that we are spending. Athletics, this is the expense for all the salaries, coaches, transportation, you know, supplies, equipment, to run the athletic program is cost about $617,973. Again, with the proposed user fee increase, we feel we'll bring in about $270,000, which is about 40, represents 44% of that cost. The extracurricular activities, these are essentially, these next few really are the direct costs of the program, which is our cost for personnel and salaries. The extracurricular program, there are various clubs and activities at the middle school and the high school, you know, for example, the music and the theater clubs. The $109,851 is what we spend on the stipends for the advisors of those programs. There are some other expenses as well, there's some field trips and some supplies and some other items that cost that go into it, but this is really the direct costs. And with the proposal, proposed increase, we feel we would bring in about $67,000, that's about 60% of that direct cost. But there's some other indirect costs associated with those activities as well. We look at the kindergarten program, we do look at the cost for, these are what I would refer to as, again, the direct cost, the cost for the staffing in those programs, the teachers and the paraprofessionals. If we look at that, we're in around $756,539. And with the tuition that is charged, we project we would spring in about $420,000. So it's around 50%, a little over 50%. And the preschool program as well, we do charge a tuition cost with the direct cost of that program, just the teachers and the pairs in the program, paraprofessionals is about $317,000, and the user fee would represent about 44% of that cost. So, I think there's, these are the things that I think are always questions that many of the members of the community and parents have, and I thought it would be helpful for a moment to take a look at it in more detail. So this is where we are today, just another summary of what we've already presented, but you can see, you know, the gross costs of our salaries and expenses, again, were over $31 million. The various offsets this year would put us at about $2.5 million of offsets. And our request, that's before the school committee and the community and the town, is $28,665,689. I want to take a moment to look at our operating budget history. I think it's important to, you know, as we project forward and look at our needs and what the request is, that's on the table this evening in fiscal 17, to take a little bit, look at history and look at where we've been. And you can see the last really sizable budget increase, these are operating budget increases from over the prior year, certainly came in fiscal 2009. When you look at fiscal 2010 and 2011, in some cases 2013, you're going to see modest budget increases. What was going on those fiscal years was the ARRA phase, that was the American Recovery during the economic recession, and there was a lot of additional federal grants and funding that all the districts across Massachusetts received. That was, that was that Recovery Reinvestment Act that districts received. So that allowed us to continue level services and move forward with relatively modest budget increases. When we moved through the year, I know in fiscal 2014, was a modest budget increase, and that was done by relying on some reserves that we had built up in some of the revolving accounts and using a lot of one-time revenue sources. So we needed a larger increase in 2015. And what brings us for this evening is a 4.3% budget request. And as I said, we are dealing with some challenges this year, from some fixed cost challenges with utility rates and the busing contracts, and new operational costs of this building, the contractual salary obligations, which I think is leading us to, you know, a need for about a 4.3% increase to continue level services and add some key new positions. I always wanted to just take a moment to touch upon some of our efforts at cost containment, because I think we work very, very hard as a district to contain our costs. One is the school expense budgets, we purchase from state bid lists, so we send out bids and aggressively make sure we're getting the biggest bang for our buck, and we do purchase in, you know, involve and pursue the educational state bid lists that are out there to, so we're spending our money wisely. When we look at utilities and natural gas, we do make sure that our occupancy schedules are set efficiently and effectively to help save energy, regulate the boilers and the spaces that are not occupied. We look at our gas rates, I think we've been very creative over the last number of years to control our, you know, gas consumption and our, and lock in at favorable times. We participate in a power options purchasing consortium, and this allows us to watch the market and try to lock in our gas rates at optimum times, and we've done that time and time again. The gas market was very, very low over the last several months, we've locked in for the next few years at a very favorable rate. We look at special education, we have a commitment to our customized programs, and we're always looking at, you know, the design of programs to keep students and educate students in district. We are a member of two collaboratives, we are a member of SEEM Collaborative and Northshore Education Consortium, where we receive reduced outer district tuition rates, as well as other services, to be a member of these two collaboratives. As a member of the SEEM Collaborative, we participate in a shared transportation model, which means there are about 12 to 14 other districts participating in outer district special education transportation, so which means we share the cost with other districts and keep that cost certainly in check. And I think the last item here is just constant vigilance with respect to daily operations. So we're always looking at ways to save money. An example here is, we, you know, underwent a pretty thorough telecommunications and cellphone audit, looked at all of our long distance local lines throughout the district and tried to see what lines were unnecessary, where we could save, and we did identify some savings. So we're always looking in, at our operation to see where we can save money. I wanted, before I turn it over for discussion, I did want to, you know, take a possible glimpse into the future, and a glimpse into fiscal 18, and as we look at, you know, where we stand today. And I think what's in front of you this evening is a recommended modified level service budget, as I just mentioned, of $28,665,689. This is not quite a balanced budget, we still have a budget gap that we're dealing with, that we continue to work with the community and the town officials of $350,440. We have begun to look to the future, so we've begun to project revenues three years out, we've begun to project expenses three years out, and we've tried to be as, you know, as accurate as we can when we, when we project revenue expenses into the future, but we, we did take a look at fiscal 18, and we are projecting at this point in time, a minimum for a level services budget, we feel we would need at minimum a 3.1% increase, which would require an additional $889,311, or an operating budget of $29,555,000. So, this does not include any new positions that could be identified and proposed as part of that strategic plan I spoke of earlier, so this would just be level services. The current estimated available revenue as of today, again, very fluid process, it changes daily, almost regularly, is $28,330,815. So as it stands today, you know, on April 4th, a potential, you know, estimated FY18 level services budget shortfall is a little over, you know, $1.2 million. So, I think what this shows you is that, as you can see, as I spoke of earlier, there are certainly budget challenges that exist today, and we perceive them continuing to exist. I think that results from the constrained, you know, the constrained local revenue, that revenue issue, and constrained at, you know, 2.5% of property taxes with other revenue sources being flat. And I think it's clear that this is really no one's really fault, no one's at fault in challenges, and there are many districts across the state that are facing similar challenges. It really just represents that there is, you know, definitely a structural problem with funding school and town budgets across the state. As we look to next steps, before I turn it over, we are having ongoing discussions with the finance planning team about available revenues. I just mentioned the present budget gap is $350,440. I just want to say that I think a lot of hard work has happened over the last month. On March 7th, I stood up here and presented the budget gap over $1.5 million. So that is considerably less, and I think, not only, I think the, now do I want to thank the administrative team who is here this evening, made up of the principals and budget leaders in North Reading, who have worked hard and diligently with myself and Superintendent Bernard over the last several weeks, to take a hard look at the budget, as well as members of the school committee during the budget workshop, to see what we can do to address the, you know, the budget gap and continue with the same level of services and meet our objectives. As well as members of the finance planning team, which are the chairs and vice chairs of all the major committees, finance committees, board of selection, and the town administrator and the town finance director, have worked hard together to resolve and lessen this budget gap. I know the chair of that committee, Bob Mysterio, would be here this evening if he wasn't attending the board of selection meeting going on at town hall this evening as well. So I definitely want to thank everyone, you know, certainly those members for their hard work. We are due to present our budget to the finance committee on April 13th, next Wednesday evening. The school committee is due to vote the budget on April 25th. Town meeting will happen on Monday evening, on the evening of June 6th. We continue to await state budget actions, the budget's moving through the houseways and means now, so we could see some movement, and this could potentially be, not anticipating large increases, but we're continuing to see what happens, and we're continuing to discuss and work together to, you know, collaborate on this, on this certainly budget. So at that point, I will, would like to actually turn it over to members of the, you know, school committee and the community for questions and discussion.
I just have a committee.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Just, just one clarification. Michael talked about contractual costs, well, 4%, an increase of 4% over last year, and he had mentioned that, that included obviously contracts as well as new positions. The contractual increases include a 2% COLA, which most all of our employees, administrators, faculty and staff received. In addition to that, there were step raises, plus the new hires, so that basically accounts for the 4%. I just wanted to clarify that the COLA was 2%
Right.
For this year. Last year it was 1%. And we just completed a teacher's contract that I think the salary schedule that we have is competitive, it's not at the top, it's not at the bottom, but it's competitive with all of our benchmark communities that we compare ourselves to, as well as all the contiguous communities around North Reading. So I think that again, that all of our salaries are competitive, but they're certainly not excessive. I just wanted to make that.
Just to add on the teacher's salary, our teachers are competitive. If you look at surrounding districts, we're really in the middle, and our teachers are about $1,000 below the state average in terms of what the average teacher's salary is. As of fiscal 2015, the average teacher's salary in North Reading, excuse me, was $73,771, and the state average is $74,676.
And I'd comment further too, that over the last 15 years, we worked very hard in contract negotiations to reduce a lot of what I would call the frills or the ornaments on the Christmas tree. We've eliminated longevity, we've dramatically reduced the buyback, we've eliminated the early retirement incentive. So it's basically, right now, salary schedule, we've tried to be competitive with, and we've gotten rid of most, if not all, of the so-called benefits, you might see another contract.
Although this year, we did, we did add back, I think the committee felt it made sense, we added back a $15,000 tuition reimbursement pool. We're always encouraging our teachers to go back and take more classes and get higher degrees in different areas, but yet we never offer them any tuition reimbursement. So we did add $15,000 in tuition reimbursement, that kicks in next year.
This coming.
And that's for everybody for the whole year.
Right.
That's, that's the entire amount, the entire year, yeah.
Mel, did you want to add anything?
The only thing I wanted to add is, just to give you a little perspective, so we're asking for a 4.3% budget increase. The town side, which includes all the other departments in town, is asking for a 3.6% increase. The town budget also is not balanced at this point, which is what's added to the difficulty this year with, for us, because in the past, the town budget has almost always been balanced at this point. And any extra funds that they're able to kind of dig up, they'll, they'll pass them over to the school side. This year, they're still struggling to balance their budget, and they're also struggling with the DPW issue, they're still reviewing that, and the budget for the DPW has not been set for next year. So that's another thing we're waiting on. We actually have another finance planning team meeting on April 15th, where we hope to have better numbers to see if we get more from the, from the town in terms of revenues. One last thing, the chapter 70 edition that we got this year from the state was $20 per student. It equaled about $49,000 in the end. So the state basically says, we'll give you $49,000 to, you know, to pay your 2% salary increases on 83.7, which is 83.7% of our budget. So it's impossible. Until the state restructures chapter 70, we're going to be in the same rut every year.
And just one more comment, then I'll shut up, but just, Mike had touched on this, historically, going back to 2003, the way we've dealt with proposition 2.5 every year, to be able to at least keep a level services budget, if you go back to 2003, I think it was that year that we passed the override, it was the first and only operations override ever for schools. That override kept us going for a few years, it was in excess of a million dollars. Then, as Michael mentioned, we got into the ARRA funds, and we spread our ARRA funds out over three fiscal years, going back to around 2008, '09 and '10. After that, we started to again, make our, just before now, make our last increase in fees, and we added some fees, and now, as Michael said, we've exhausted all of the enterprise accounts or all the money that we had sitting around. So over the last, basically 10 or 12 years, we've tried to deal with 2.5 in different ways, and we find ourselves again now, and probably next fiscal year, with the well running dry. There are no more funds in the revolving accounts, there are no more fees that we can add, although, and again, we're adding, we're proposing some additional fees, and certainly there's no override on the horizon. So, 2.5 has made it difficult for us, and we've been able to cope with it by these various methods, and I think we're running out of options right now. these various methods, and I think we're running out of options right now.
Can you please, yeah, use the mic, and please state your name and address for the record?
Lauren Corino, South Shore Avenue. Are there costs associated with implementing a parking fee, like parking stickers, calling liar leaders, that all should be into the anticipated forty-five thousand?
That's a really good question, and it's, what I think distinguishes the parking fee from the other fees, we've talked about that. I told you guys not to do anything with that parking.
Right, exactly.
But that's a good question, and there'd be some minor, probably fairly insignificant administrative costs, but that would be it. So you're right on the mark with that.
I'm going to, at our next meeting, I'm going to make a motion to eliminate the parking fee from the budget. We're going to have to fine that forty-five thousand. It doesn't make sense to me, the other fees cover something, at least, you're getting something. Here, you're getting a slab of pavement. I don't think we should be charging for parking fees, so I'm going to make that motion at the next school committee meeting next week to eliminate that.
And if that, if that's approved, the deficit's now three-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand.
Right.
I think this gentleman.
The fees, the revenue that you're expecting, does it account for any impression as a result of the fee increases? Do you anticipate, as a result of the fee increases, people not taking the bus, or not going out to the third sport?
Yes, we looked at, we've taken that into account, and we have anticipated and tried to project the additional revenue conservatively, realizing that could be a result. We hope it would not be, but we have tried to project that revenue conservatively.
Kevin from Three-Sammer Lane. Yeah, I was really opposed to the parking fee, because I think it underly burdens the seniors last year, because they have thousands of dollars back to them. I'd be more in favor of some type of digital learning fee, you know, somewhere around the same amount, because it's more applied to the elementary level, because that, I know myself personally, I'm not very burdened there, and once you get through kindergarten, seven, forty, fifty, there's not a lot of cost, and it costs me two-hundred dollars a year to sign up for the school. So another two-hundred dollars a year at that level for the elementary, you know, that's like three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for that particular group, not as popular, but it may be a great way to raise the revenue and close that two-hundred and fifty out right there, so you've got your two-hundred dollars.
Good idea.
I don't need a microphone. All right, Capazudo, Twelve Dwayne Drive.
Who are you? I'm sorry, go ahead.
If you could go back, Michael, to the operating budget history, I had a question about that. How much, do I have to do this?
No, my wife just texted me and said she can't hear anything that the audience is saying, so if we pass this mic around, this is the magic NorCam mic, but it won't magnify the voice.
What do I do, do I have to hold this?
No, not at this.
Just like this?
Yeah.
I can? I'm good. All right. I'm just curious about, if you look at, from two thousand and eight to two thousand and seventeen, how much of this operating budget history is tied to student enrollment? We know we've had peaks and valleys, and what are we looking at? Are we looking at a bump up? How much of that is tied to enrollment?
I can give you part of the answer, and I'm not saying this to be crude, but in a lot of ways, the schools have become a dumping ground for a lot of problems that exist with kids, and we're kind of the last bastion of dealing with those problems. So one of the things you see proposed tonight is a new guidance counselor psychologist for the middle school. We only have two right now for over six hundred kids, and we all know that that's the age group where most problems start, sometimes earlier, but that's the age group where they start to really kind of manifest themselves. We should have a minimum of three now, we should probably have four or five, and most other schools have well more. The state maximum recommendation is to have two hundred students for guidance counselor, and we have three hundred right now. And, you know, that's only part of the issue there, we really need somewhere down the line in a social and emotional program at the middle school to deal with the problems that these kids have. Right now, we kind of deal with them on a one-off basis. But I think part of the problem with the budget is, we're asked to do more and more of those kinds of services, special ed. We all understand our responsibility to educate every student in the district, and we take that seriously. But I have some numbers here, so the state, in fiscal two thousand and fifteen, we spent on outside, out-of-state school, or out-of-district schools, we spent over two-point-two million dollars. The state reimbursed us seven-hundred-and-nineteen thousand. So we're spending about fifty thousand dollars per child, or sixty thousand per child in some cases, so we're spending four times what it costs to educate a child in district when we have to send the kid out of district to get the proper education. State needs to step up. My whole point is, we're asked to do more every single year, and we don't get any more funding from the state. To me, that's a big part of the issue. Michael can address the enrollment, I don't think.
Well, the enrollment thing, though, Mike, is that people look at declining enrollment, the selectmen have asked this question, I'm sure the finance committee will, because they asked it last year, but if you look at the decline in enrollment, I mean, from sixteen to seventeen, you're talking about maybe twenty students, and even, you know, maybe thirty, forty, fifty. If you spread those students over five schools, it doesn't translate into reducing staff at all. It might, at some point in time, maybe seven or eight years from now, but right now, there's just not enough decline in enrollment to really translate into a reduction in staff, because you're spreading that enrollment out over, really, five different schools.
A number of grades.
A number of, not only five schools, but twelve grades, so it's kind of microscopic when you look at it.
And yet, at the same time, at the high school, where we're proposing adding one teacher this year, we should be adding probably three teachers. We have a large percentage of our classes over twenty-four, and we have twenty-five to thirty classes with over thirty kids, but we don't have, we don't have the money to do that, because we have to meet the other, the other needs. So enrollment is, that's a place where enrollment should be saying, put more money into academic teachers at the high school, but we don't have the money.
If I could follow up, I think that was my point, that I don't think we're the dumping ground, I like to consider us the attractive place, but yes, we are.
I'm just saying, from the, society kind of says, we can't handle this problem, Will.
More students that require more services, so.
Right.
The point, yes. We're being terribly underpaid.
That require more, and deserve more.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, I mean, just one, if you were to chart, look at the operating budget history chart and the ten-year enrollment history chart, you're not going to see a lot of patents, you know, you can see the cases where the enrollment went down, but we still saw an operating budget increase of, you know, a sizable increase, so there's a little bit of a patent there, so it might be a factor, but not certainly a large factor.
Thank you.
Laura, if you make sure you can pass that mic along to whoever.
Mrs. Riley, behind you, and then to the.
Thanks, Scott.
Sherry Riley, one oh one Marblehead Street. I'd like to agree with the gentleman, Kevin, I think his name was.
Eric.
Erica, I'm sorry. That fee for parking from a zero for two years to two hundred dollars is just astronomically ridiculous.
Oh, I thought you were going to say it should be more.
It should, as I just checked with my sister in Natick, they pay nothing. If you need to increase, increase, but as you pointed out, too, what's that money for? Now, I know Mr. Downs is out there every morning, or some mornings, checking to see if the student belongs there, or parking down here, or not parking at all. You just can't go from zero to two hundred. It's just, you just can't do that, all the expenses, and he picked out seniors, juniors too. Juniors are getting their, students are getting their licenses a lot earlier, and I know seniors get to go first, and then whoever's next, but that amount is crazy. And then just, that's as a parent, as a paraprofessional here at the school, you're talking about hiring more and more people, and how we need more and more people, but you need to look at who you have and how you're paying them. You're talking about getting all these people in, the teachers, I'm a paraprofessional, no way am I a teacher, but for the job I do, and all our paraprofessionals do, we're getting paid less money than all the surrounding areas. And for what we do, keeping students safe, keeping students on track, sitting down with them and doing their schoolwork, you got to double-check that salary, because it's nowhere near what it needs to be.
We'll be glad to deal with that in the next contract negotiations with you.
Yes.
Okay, and I plan on being there, I haven't heard anything about that, but just, I wanted to bring that up.
You started out by commenting about what's the parking fee for, and it's very simple, it's just a revenue source, and none of us want it, none of us. Mr. Webster has said that he's going to work at voting against it, I'm against it.
I'm against it.
Actually, I'm against all of the fees we charge, and I have been for the entire time that I've been on the school committee. You know, it's been eight years that I've been fighting those fees. It's a public education we should be looking for, and that should have no fees associated with it, but we just can't do that. And this, you know, we run an efficient system. If you look at the numbers, all of those numbers show, well, with the exception of our professional development, we're below the state numbers. Every single category, you look at where we stand from a total per pupil cost, we're below the state average. We run an efficient operation, and it's an effective operation. Look at what we do for, you know, statistics. Unfortunately, you know, we do a great job of controlling class sizes in the elementary schools, but those numbers for the high school are ridiculous, as, you know, a class is going to thirty-three kids, that's terrible. And especially if you look at the mass of students that are in classes over twenty-four, that's, you know, again, we're pushing the envelope. Fortunately, we have a lot of kids that pick it up and run, and we have a lot of families that give at home to their kids to help them along. We all hate this budget stuff, every one of us hates it, and we wish that there was a different way to do it, where there just isn't enough revenue. And if we had a whole lot of low-income people, or a whole lot of English as a second language people, then we would get more state aid. But as it is, the state, you know, Jerry's talked about, you know, the lack of additional funding in the last few years. We've had the lack of funding from the state, and insufficient funding from the state, ever since chapter seventy started out in the nineties. And at this point, it's estimated that the state is two billion dollars in aggregate per year, two billion dollars, behind on chapter seventy funding. The commission, the foundation budget commission that was put up by the legislature has completed their report, and they're saying that just a couple of items that they hit on would amount to about five-hundred million this year. You can't, you can't keep back that much fund and not have the systems in the state feel it. That's what happens, and we need to be beating on the legislature to fix that, and the governor to fix it, instead of giving us the paltry amount that we get as an increase. I'm sorry, I'm going on.
To the lady in the blue.
Hi, Kristy Sarno, Three Lillian Drive. I was wondering if you could please explain the local receipt portion of the revenue, like, I thought it was about ten percent of the revenue, and I don't understand what opportunities are within that category.
That, so the town charges, you know, various, you know, some of that's a trash fee, that these are all, you know, fees that are assessed by the town of North Reading that they receive and, you know, take in on an annual basis.
I think it includes excise tax, which is a big number.
Restaurant licenses, liquor licenses.
All your building fees, permits.
Yeah.
And do those, do those get, what kind of increases do those get every year, you know?
They've been, so I think the local receipts and these other revenue sources, state and federal grants I spoke of earlier, have, are relatively flat, so we're not, we're not seeing these large increases in these other revenue sources, local receipts being one, and then with the taxes being the seventy percent amount of the total revenue coming into the community that had capped at two-and-a-half percent, and the fixed costs I spoke of earlier, with certainly health insurance being a big, you know, a big part of that, is rising, you know, almost double, two percent, you know, four percent, four-and-a-half percent in total. So that's some of that funding challenge, you know, where, you know, ourselves and all communities are faced with.
So is that part of the budget discussion at the town level, or where does that come in?
So North Reading has what a committee called.
Finance Planning Team.
Finance Planning Team, and we meet monthly, and that is the chair and the vice chair of the board of selectmen, the finance committee, the school committee, myself, Mr. Bernard, and the town administrator and the town finance director. And we, we meet every month, and we look at all the available revenue sources, we look at, you know, the local receipts, you know, coming in for this year, are they on target with what we projected, what we projected last year, and then we make some assumptions, and we look at the trends, and we project out forward, and we try to, you know, see what the available revenues are for both, you know, school and town, we put everything together, state aid included. And then we back out the fixed costs, so we look at, you know, the health insurance, general liability insurance, you know, for the town, regional assessment costs, and we, we reduce the available estimated revenues by the amount of the fixed cost. And then it's about a two-thirds split of that available revenue goes to the school, and the other third goes to the town, and that's really the revenue and the guideline that we're working from when we develop our budget.
Just to provide a little more detail, the town's kind of limited on how they can raise those fees. The biggest one really is the auto excise tax, and that's set by the state. And then there's the meals tax, which, when that came in three years ago, I believe, that was a nice boost for that one year, but now it's stayed pretty steady for us. I think we raise a hundred fifty, two-hundred thousand a year from the meals tax. So the town, the town could raise fees on, I don't even know if liquor licenses is state too, right?
Yeah, I think that's.
There's very little.
There's the trash fee, and there's a few.
But the trash fee covers the trash programs, so.
There's not much, the meal's tax is about two-hundred and a half thousand.
Building permits.
All right, thank you.
Hi again, Loretta Capazudo, Twelve Dwayne Drive, leave that up. I've been in town twenty-one years, we've always, out of the three-hundred-and-fifty cities and towns in the Commonwealth, we have always been at the bottom for per pupil spending. Could you just review quickly, briefly, it would take a lot of time, how that's calculated, and why we're always like third from the bottom?
Mike, before you do that, let me, so when I joined the committee, we were eighth from the bottom.
There you go.
We are now one-hundred-and-fortieth in spending, so that means there's one-hundred-and-thirty-nine districts that spend less than us, there's one-hundred-and-eighty-two that spend more than us.
It's better.
It's much better.
Not just because Mel joined the committee.
Right, and that was my impact on joining the committee, but.
It's entirely my fault.
So we've moved, we've significantly moved that up. There's one other factor before Mike answers what goes into this. One of the issues that North Reading has is, and some people don't want to believe this, some people just don't believe this, we are considered a wealthy community by the state right now. We have the fifty-fourth highest per capita income in the state, we are in the top fifteen percent of wealthy communities in the state. The state looks at that, and the state says they don't need as much funding, because that's, that's part of the consideration, is per capita income. So that's one of the issues, I just wanted to get out there, it makes it difficult, that combined with having no, essentially no commercial and industrial tax base, is kind of like, it's a killer for us in terms of, in terms of raising money. Mike, you might want to go into what goes into the end dollars.
Yeah, so I just pulled up an Excel spreadsheet, which is, provides a little more detail than the chart and PowerPoint, and this is, this is all data that the DESE publishes on their website on an annual basis. And first off, what's driven what every school district is required, and Massachusetts is required, to submit was known as the end-of-the-year report, by September thirtieth of every year, and that's a report that essentially illustrates all the funds that went into, that were expended that, for that previous fiscal year, in some of the major categories that they, that they certainly asked for the information for. And that's not just the general fund appropriations that were, that the school committee adopts on, but that's also the grants and the revolving accounts and some of the other revenue sources that I spoke of earlier. So all that information gets kind of compiled in this large report, it gets sent out to the state, and that provides the data that the state is able to publish each year, and that provides some of that comparable data with other areas, so.
Mike, go down a little bit on that, so you can see the insurance costs, I think insurance is at the bottom, I think.
That's huge.
Insurance, retirement programs.
That's huge.
So that, and that also includes, so it includes our general fund appropriation that the school committee adopts on an annual basis, it includes the revolving accounts, the things we charge fees for and tuitions for, it includes our state and federal grant expenditures, it also includes some expenditures that is incurred by the town, like, for instance, insurance, retirement costs, some operations and maintenance costs that are contributed to the schools.
And so, just to make, so this number right here is our cost per pupil of out of district, sixty thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars. So that's the point, if the state could step up and give us another half a million dollars, another million dollars, then we could, you know, we wouldn't have the stress that we have every year.
Correct. You know, I think the state releases, you know, a foundation budget, which is a budget, you know, they feel is an appropriate level of spend. which is a budget, you know, they feel is an appropriate level of spending in all these major expense categories. And I think there, you know, for instance, for North Reading, some analysis was done and the gap of that foundation budget in terms of what our actual expenditures are is for special education out of district costs was over a million dollars. So it's, you know, part of what Mel's speaking to.
There's also a chart done by the Department of Revenue that if you go in and look at all of the other communities in the state, you'll find out that on other things like police, fire, Department of Public Works, general government, if you look at those and compare North Reading versus those other communities in the Commonwealth, you'll find out that we're pretty consistent with, right about the same as everybody else. So it isn't like we have some other part of our government that is in the stratosphere and that schools are cut short.
I'm Lena Simone, I don't need the microphone either, from Seven Deerfield Place here in North Reading. And I just had a real quick comment and then I wanted to ask, I guess, the board and perhaps our superintendent something. First, the comment that was made about the parking, I don't agree with the parking fee either. But I have to say at the elementary level, the one thing that we have to keep in mind is that the elementary parents actually do spend a lot of money. You see the PAs raise a ton of money between events. I mean, we enjoy the events, but they're expensive. I mean, everything costs money, so I just want to keep that in mind in case future budget talks. The other thing I wanted to ask is, do we have any plans as a district to attend the Day on the Hill? It's the, for the Association of School Committees. It's the end of April and there is a cost. It's ninety dollars per person that goes, but you have the chance. The governor's there, the head of the Committee on Education is there, from the Senate, from the House of Representatives. It's a good time to be able to go and lobby, I guess, your different legislators. And you get a chance to maybe grab the governor's ear. I know that, you know, we've been trying to kind of come together with other towns. It just seems like it might be a good idea. And students go for free. Not that I'm advocating skipping school, but kids make a big difference when you take them to the State House, so.
Thank you, I did attend last year and I am attending this year. I am bringing a student, a student rep in the school committee this year. April twenty-sixth, I believe, is the date.
Yep, Tuesday.
And just sort of as a way, you've heard about the finance planning team. Last Friday at the meeting, finance planning team consists of representatives from the school committee, the Board of Select, from the finance committee and the administrators. And last week, I think Representative Jones was present, as was somebody representing Senator Ta.
Right.
Who's also at the meeting. And they were given an airfall about our situation and our predicament. And I think the governor's obviously important, but it has to start with the legislature. Every, I've been saying this for months now, but every single community has a state rep and a state senator. I don't know what issue could be more important than the issue of funding public education. And somehow it keeps slipping through the cracks and other things get funded. And as Cliff mentioned, we need two billion dollars across the state to bring everybody up to where they should be, so. You know, and again, I'm sure John will represent us and I'm not sure who from the committee is going.
I'm planning on attending.
Julie's going too. And, but again, I, just so you know, we have been communicating with our state rep, state rep and our state senator, both of whom are the minority leaders in the legislature.
One issue that was made clear by both Representative Jones and the representative from Senator Ta's office is that forty percent of the state budget goes to mass health. So that's sixteen billion dollars a year goes to mass health. So there's absolutely no flexibility. That's a locked-in cost. And that's increasing, the percentage increase in that is crazy. And that's part of the reason why the governor gave us twenty dollars per student this year. There is an effort, I don't know if it's in the House or the Senate, to increase that twenty dollars to a hundred dollars per student. That would bring us, you know, eighty dollars times our twenty-five hundred or so students, around two hundred thousand dollars, I guess, if that happened. That would be very helpful. It still wouldn't bring us, you know, whole, but that's an issue that obviously we can all get behind.
Good evening, Scott Buckley, Five Alden Street. One question and one small criticism. The criticism first, I do think this is an important hearing. And so the fact that it was scheduled the same night as the Board of Selectmen, I do think that was poor planning. And I know that in years past, the selectmen have come before. And I do think it's good to hear from them and for them to hear from the people here as well. And so I think going forward, it would be important if the selectmen could be part of these meetings if they wanted to as well. And parents that maybe wanted to go to either of them. As for the question, I know there's not much you can do with the big numbers here, but when the school was being voted on, there's a lot of discussion about saving costs on, you know, core facilities. But also with special education in particular, there was talk about being able to keep more people here potentially by having a newer, better school. Have we seen any of that? I mean, if you're saying that again, we're spending more kids out of school and you're pointing out how expensive that is at other districts, have we been able to keep more people here because of the new schools or not?
I think that, Mr. Bernard, that's
I would, the short answer is yes. This school was designed with certain, I would call them kind of specialized facilities, Scott, that enabled us to run programs here for students who required such services.
I would add to that, so that's a double-edged sword. So the goal is, or the responsibility is to give the student the required education that, you know, that they need to get through their twelve or thirteen years. So one of our goals that we've had for many years is to try to keep as many students in the district as possible while meeting that requirement. And I think in a lot of cases, and Cynthia Conant, our Director of People Personnel Services here and can address this, it's good to keep the student in district with friends, with familiar faces, et cetera. But there's a double-edged sword, so we do that and we save money. One of the things Michael pointed out earlier is the hundred and some odd, hundred fifty thousand or whatever for those two teachers in a para in order to bring these programs from the elementary school, the middle school and the middle to the high school. If we don't do that, we're gonna, we're gonna end up spending three hundred fifty thousand to send those students out of district instead of the hundred fifty to keep them in. That's good, but the state doesn't give us anything. By us investing the hundred fifty thousand internally as a district, we get nothing from the state. So, you know, we don't want to send the kids out of the district, but we're spending a hundred fifty thousand dollars and we don't get any reimbursement for that.
So you have to find the, where it equals out or balances out from sending kids out of district to keeping them in district.
And actually, John, I don't know if Cynthia wants to address that whole keeping kids in versus
Tracy Conlin, Seven Sandra Lane. I am completely on board with the, bringing on the three special education, or the two teachers and the one para for the, for the special education transition. I'm not fully on board with North Reading PS twenty-twenty-one. I don't think we can afford it right now. But one question I did have, and correct me if I'm wrong. It looks like we're bringing on the positions that we are coming in at a higher step than
I can answer, or either, I think between Mr. Conlin, were you done?
Well, that, yeah.
Okay. I would, I would, I would argue that, your point is well-taken and I think, but I would just add to the, to the three additional positions, the ones that are in our strategic plan, the NRPS twenty-twenty-one. I would argue the two of those fall into a similar category or a similar philosophy of the transition programs in that the middle school psychologist and the special education teacher for the high school, I believe, are positions that we need to largely stay in compliance, particularly the high school special education teacher with the identified accommodations in a student's educational plan. The middle school psychologist, it's our belief, when I say our, I'm gonna point to Mrs. O'Connell, the middle school principal, we believe very strongly that we could do a better job with an additional person servicing the six hundred and eight students at the middle school by cutting that ratio down, which could in turn, I think it's a little bit more speculative than the special education teacher at the high school. But we could, by intervening sooner, head off some of the potential costs that we might realize down the road. So for the two, two of the three, I think it's a similar belief as it is with the three positions that were up on the screen for the transition programs. The academic teacher for the high school would be kind of the only outlier, I would say. But in, I think we believe that there were too many classes with too many students in them at the high school. And I think
Class size is a high priority.
Class sizes are, and course offerings, the ability to offer courses to students at the high school where they have a high level of interest is, I think, a philosophy that this community has adopted over the years and I happen to ascribe to. I think it's true that we could be asking for even more core academic teachers at the high school, but this budget tries to strike a balance between, you know, a level of reasonable, a reasonableness. We're recognizing the appetite, the affordability that the community has. And as you can see, we're still, we're still out of whack with what the available revenues are for us today and what we're hoping to achieve. But we believe that these are positions that are, that are needed and we try to, to strike a balance with this budget tonight that, that I think helps us to meet our goals and also recognizes that the community is being asked to pay a lot. And we appreciate and recognize that. But we tried to strike a balance and that's why we only kept the one academic teacher for the high school. I would just add that there were, Mr. Conlin mentioned that there were other NRPS twenty-twenty-one positions that we took off. There were originally six, we're down to three. An additional position was a secondary teaching and learning coordinator for science, technology, engineering and math. We were hoping in year one to add that position and then in year two, which would be fiscal year eighteen, to add a similar position at the secondary level for humanities. Each of those positions would have captured an additional point four, full-time equivalent teacher at the high school. So it would have been almost another teacher over two years. The other position was an elementary teaching and learning coordinator that would have, would have been an administrative level position for the three elementary schools, but we've taken those off, so.
John, what about the steps that these
Oh, on the step, yeah, we, you know, North Reading is an attractive community to work in. And I found last year, when I was in my first summer as the superintendent hiring people, that it was very challenging to, to hire people, given their experience, their talents and the fit for North Reading, at such a low level. There were, there were some very challenging times where, with some specialized positions, that in order to just get the person that we felt was best for the district, we needed to, we needed to up that average. That's, that represents an average, is it master's step?
This is a mid-level ma- master's step in scale.
So it's between a master's step one and a master's step six, correct?
Right, it's, right, it's, step twelve is the max.
Step twelve is the max.
It's eighty-nine hundred per position, right?
Eighty-nine, I'm sorry.
A difference in the steps.
Yeah, I mean, they're suggesting you would hire at step one then, right.
Well, they would all have a master's, there would just be a
Maybe, yeah, be step one.
Some won't, that's kind of an average salary. Some people commit a little bit higher, other people commit a little bit lower. We, we're using that as a placeholder for an average.
Yeah, so we do look at those trends over the last two or three years, as Mr. Bernard just spoke to. And we did, we have seen a shift in the needs of the district. So it is a little bit higher than what we use as the benchmark budgeting in the past, but we, we felt there was an appropriate adjustment given
Because last year's special education high school teacher, right, was brought in at fifty-one, whatever step that was.
We were probably seeing at around fifty-two thousand.
However, there was a middle school person that was hired at a much higher rate. So I think if you looked at the two salaries, you would find that that average was pretty darn close to what we had projected.
Well, I guess my point would be if we need to come up with the parking fee issue money, perhaps there's some leeway on what steps are brought in for all the new hires. And I also think that there is decreasing enrollment and
Well, you can, you can think there's decreasing enrollment, we have the numbers right in front of us.
That's, I mean, that's from here, that there's
We have, we have the numbers in front of us and again
And it's projected to decrease.
The problem is you don't realize, you don't realize forty students in a grade level to say that we are able to reduce a teacher in that grade level. It's a little bit spread out. And I, I think it's important, I don't think it's been said tonight. We did reduce two teachers at the middle school in the last two fiscal years, this year and last fiscal year. So we have been
You laid them off?
Yeah, we reduced the positions, yeah.
Oh, okay, that's
So we've done four in two years. And I think that probably could be, could have been on the cost continuously. I mean, we're, we're very cognizant of the, of the population, but it's not as simple as saying that, you know, when you look at the bar graphs, as good a chart as this is, it doesn't break it out by, say, grade level where we could actually capture a savings of a teacher.
Well, I'm glad to hear that you have, not that, I'm glad to hear that, but it sounds like we keep adding and
There is a level of vigilance. And I would just, if I could just take a quick second, all of the administrators are here tonight. This process for us in the budget development has gone on since October. We started in October in earnest with putting together our list of the things that we felt we needed to do our best work in our schools. And the administrators have, have hung in there for, you know, countless hours. And Michael has, you know, you see him tonight making this presentation. It's been the focus of his work really in earnest the last two months. And the committee is very engaged. We are, we are, we are in a quandary. We don't like, you know, I'll say it, I'm not on the committee, I'm not gonna take the vote. But I did bring forward, along with Michael, the idea of the, of the parking fee, much to the, to the disagreement of the high school students, I know that, I hear it every morning, since it's been in the paper, thank you, Dan. But it's, we, we are, we just don't know what else. I don't know where else to go, unfortunately. And it's, it's, if we're, we're, we're gonna, you know, be looking at an increase in the deficit from the three fifty to the three ninety-five perhaps next week, that we'll, we'll go back to the drawing board and we'll sharpen our pencil and we'll look, you know, even harder at but I'm just putting it out there that it's, it's very challenging right now.
I just want to add, we do do some thorough enrollment analysis with the administrative team and the principals throughout the development process. And we, we look at how to be as, you know, efficient and as effective as we can with the enrollment. And it has led to reductions in years. And in this case, looking at fiscal, you know, sixteen into seventeen, you know, there were some, there were some, certainly some challenges. But the number, you know, a twenty-eight student reduction, when you have essentially the elementary schools going down by five students, a high school going up by eight students and the middle school going down by around twenty students, really doesn't, you know, there's really not some staffing, you know, reductions or efficiency to be gained. So you, it's not always, you have to look at the kind of larger picture and how it's fluctuating amongst grade level and amongst, amongst level.
Can you pass Michael over? Oh, it's one right here, in the front. Sorry. Oh, Marcy, sorry. I saw her, I did her
What's her name?
Thank you.
Now you have time to get more nervous.
There we go.
Marcy Bailey, Twenty-One, Dwayne Drive. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Conlin very much for putting together an incredibly detailed presentation that makes the picture very clear and also at having at the literal touch of his finger, any bit of information that we need. I'd like to make a comment and then ask a question. The comment would be on the high school teacher, which maybe doesn't feel like as high a priority as some of the sped teachers. With the high class sizes, a single high school teacher can impact, the addition of a single high school teacher can impact over a hundred students a day. When you say if they have four or five sections of thirty students a day and that can be reduced to, to say twenty students in an AP class, that impacts the twenty students that are still there and the ten students who are in a smaller class size, probably with twenty students somewhere else in a better situation. It can take away just a procedure where a teacher maybe relies more on peer editing of students because that teacher has over a hundred essays, AP essays to grade in a day or over a weekend and it's just not practical and possible. So to maximize the success of all our students, I think we can't forget the high school students in regular education classrooms and the teachers who are struggling to give them some level of individual attention and just, you know, the attention they all deserve so they don't become students who need extra help and who need other attention. So I think those positions are very critical. Now I have a question, and Michael, could you put back the chart from the state you had that you were just showing to Lori Capazudo with the, the per pupil expenditure categories detailed? Yep, that one. So you had said that the North Reading's PPE is, I agree, much improved from past years to fourteen thousand a year. But when you look at that chart, and if you stop right there, it's great, the second to last column. So I assume that the fourteen thousand, one thirty-seven includes special education expenditures because what I see there is expenditures within the district are thirteen, four oh eight. I don't know if I can see, expenditures outside the district are sixty thousand, six sixty-nine.
Right, yep.
So the fourteen, one thirty-seven is some sort of blend of that, is that correct?
That's, that's the average.
That's the average. So, so my question is, is what I'm seeing there then in the last two columns, without the special education cost from North Reading, our per pupil expenditure is one thousand dollars less per pupil than the average, while our special education outside the district expenditure is three times the outside the district expenditure for the state average. Why is that?
So Michael and I had this discussion today. One of the things, this is something that the state needs to change. So a lot of districts for out-of-district tuitions, that includes kids that go off to charter schools or school choice. The sending district, if we, if we had a charter school in our district, the sending district if we, if we had a charter school in our district, the sending district sp- pays five thousand dollars for that student to go to a charter school, or five thousand dollars for that student if they're in school choice to go to Masco or Penn Tucket. So that significantly lowers the out-of-district cost, we don't have any, we don't have any kids, we, we're not a part of school choice, and we're not part of charter school district, so all of our costs, the majority of our costs are special ed, and there's eight or nine students, or maybe fewer, who go to Essex Aggie, which costs about eighteen thousand five hundred, eighteen thousand dollars a year. So you, you average the special ed tuitions with the Essex Aggie tuitions, and that's how you get our number.
So if we, if we look at a like district that doesn't send students for, to charter schools, will we see a similar number?
Much higher, some are over a hundred fifty, two hundred thousand.
We would, we would.
Okay, I just wanted to understand that, thank you.
I think the biggest, the biggest thing to understand with that number is not just special education out of district.
Right.
It could be regular education students, that it might be going to a, you know, a school choice or a charter school, it encompasses both, so I think what, we are a district that doesn't have a lot of students going to a charter school in the area, we're not a school choice district, so that cost encompasses all special education, where other districts may have a charter school in the area, based on their regionality and the demographics, so they, their costs are lowered because of that, you know, because of what's happening.
Okay.
But if a, a similar district for Linfield, I think, was around fifty thousand dollars...
Reading was around the same area, there were others that were triple, there was one that was three hundred sixteen thousand dollars per out-of-district student they were spending.
Okay, thank you, now I understand.
Just for the record, Marcy, he doesn't get that information from the button, it's all in his head, all that information's in his head.
Amazing, thank you very much.
Mary Dennehy Colaruso, ten Wyoming Nav, one of the things that I'd like to comment on with the discussion related to special education, is that even though the state needs to look at their set, chapter seventy funding formula, it really needs to be said and recognized, in particular to special education, that since I D E A was instituted, it has only been funded at forty percent.
That's right, yeah.
So for every time any of us talk about what is being funded at a state level, that message needs to go up to a federal level, and we need full funding for special education.
Right. She's got a question.
Hi, I'm Siobhan Fitzgerald from thirty-one Duane Drive, and I want to thank you for all the hard work that went into putting this budget together, and I can appreciate the efficiencies that you were able to find and excavate and plan for moving forward. And what I can see as a resident is that overall, we don't really have a spending problem, we have a revenue issue, and I think right now the selectmen are meeting, and there's an economic planning team in town that are kind of hoping to work through these issues. But I wonder if there are any models that we can think about and apply to this setting? You know, I look at academia, and they have, you know, their own charitable organizations that run alongside them, five oh one C threes with, you know, endowed chairs, yeah, you know, is there any kind of tax incentivized way that these wealthy residents might be able to give back to the school that they graduated from?
We, we, we have a five oh one C three that was started, and has pretty much remained dormant since it was started, which is...
We're going back literally ten years where we started talking about this.
But we can't, as a committee, we can't be involved in it, it has to be private citizens who aren't part of the school committee, so I, I don't even know, I don't even know the, the current status of that...
Yeah, there, there is, there is an ed foundation, it was started, I'm going to say, oh, I think it was when David retired.
It was seven, maybe seven years ago.
Seven years ago, yeah, something like that, but as Mr. Webster said, it really, it just, I, I attended a few meetings when I was the high school principal, I think I attended one...
Yep.
When the prior superintendent was transitioning out, and I was coming on board, but it just, it just never...
It fizzled.
It never got the, the legs, I think, that we had hoped, we had, I remember attending a meeting where we had invited somebody that had run a very successful educational endowment, I think it was in Newburyport...
Yep.
To get some advice on how it might attract more interest here, and it just, it just, for lack of a, a better term, it just never got any legs.
John, do we know if that, one, one of the things they, I, I know that, I think they submitted all the paperwork to get state approval...
They get a five oh one C three.
Because, because we have it in place, the, the point is, we need someone to kind of grab it by the horns and do some, I know Boxford has like an incredible one, they raised tons of money, maybe this is a good place to start, right here, I think the board was three members, I don't know if that's how many it has to have.
Well, I'm a superintendent, David Troutman.
Right, was involved, yeah.
Correct.
John Murphy, yes, that's correct.
Maureen Vaca.
Maureen Vaca, yeah, those three, yeah, yeah, so there, there are many people involved, but it really, I mean, if there are people who have time and an interest, it's kind of sitting there waiting to be taken over, I guess.
It's a great idea, I mean...
Yeah, I mean, I just thinking there's, now with Facebook, social networking, you can really get groups like, I could imagine like the baseball alumni funding a coach's spot, if it's not just for a year, then an ongoing, you know...
Well, we've gotten good contributions from those types of groups, directly earmarked for specific things like the baseball field or the baseball team, but the education foundation would be more...
Buy a new piano for the, you know, for the theater group, you know, that's the kind of stuff that I know they do in other communities. What's this Facebook thing you talk about, I'm not...
Yeah, I think we've met on Facebook, actually, now that you mention it, but no, I think, I, I just think there's, and even, you know, in your will, can you donate something to North Reading's school, you know?
Well, we should, we actually, we actually had a donation a couple of years ago from a former teacher of more than six hundred thousand dollars, that was earmarked...
Six seventy-five.
For sal- for scholarships.
Yeah.
So we have...
You could ask people to put their wills in and just hope for people to die.
Yeah, no.
Raise as much money as possible, I mean, that's the only...
Well, all right, well, so maybe, maybe if there's some way to kind of create some energy around that, and there are probably people that work for nonprofit in the community that would have this ability.
I think John Mur...
I have an interest, but maybe not the ability.
But I think if someone has interest in, to even getting information, John Murphy, who's the town moderator, would be a good person to contact, to, to find out what, what's going on with that, if anything, and then, you know, if there are people interested, he could probably point you in the right direction to how to get the, how to get it moving. Yeah, as I said, we can't be involved legally, so...
I mean, keep in mind, too, that we're trying to maintain every year level services.
Yeah.
Now, level service is different than level funding, because level funding doesn't fund level services...
Right.
Yeah.
Each year, so, I mean, we're, we're not adding a whole lot, these positions, and, and, you know, the positions that were discussed earlier, part of the strategic plan, the administrative team put a lot of time into that, and those are the ones they identified as being necessary, so, and we have a lot of faith in the administrative team and the effort that they put into it, and when John brings it before us, it's hard to say, well, in our opinion, we, we don't think we can fund those things, so, you know, we're not asking for a lot, a lot of the positions, as has been pointed out, are necessary to probably save money, as opposed to costing us money when it comes to special education.
Yeah, well, we can't make some of those things go away, I mean, special education, the need is only increasing as diagnosis rates go up, and I, I'm just thinking, how do we stay away from this tumbling ball of need, you know?
And it grows, because another example, and we haven't been hit with this yet, and we think it's a good idea, is the whole, the new opioid bill that Governor Baker signed is going to require verbal screening, I think of two different grades...
Correct.
And I think it...
Seventeen, eighteen.
Starts next year, two thousand seventeen.
Another state mandate without any...
Well, we don't, we don't have staff that's assigned to interview three, four hundred students in terms of, to determine whether they may be abusing opioids, we, we don't have staff to do that, and the state, with good intentions, says, you will do this now, and you will find the money to do this, and that's what happens all the time.
You can't do that with volunteers.
No.
No.
We wish.
Hi, Sue Regan, five Lindor Road, I came here to ask specifically about the club fee, and how you decided to go from a hundred and twenty-five to two hundred dollars, that seems like a huge increase to me, I have four kids in the school, so that's going to be three hundred dollars out of my budget that I have to give to the school now, if they want to do clubs, I just think a more reasonable increase might be more fair.
Yeah, I think, Mrs. Regan, I think, quite, quite honestly, we were, we're just trying to, to close the budget gap, and we saw that that was a fee that hasn't been, has not been increased at all since it was instituted, your point is well-taken, there's no, there's no methodology to how we went from one twenty-five to two hundred, it was to try to, to get us to a point where the gap was closed by recognizing, you know, some sort of an increase with the athletic fee, some sort of an increase with the extracurricular fee, there's, there's no other, there's no other reason other than it was just to try to close the budget gap, and to generate as much revenue as we co- we could, as distasteful as all of the fees are, we, we, the committee said it, I'll say it again, we just, we don't like any of them, but the reason was to just try and, and generate enough revenues to, to reduce the budget gap.
When was that fee intro- when did, was that fee introduced?
The activity?
Like, a long time, I came here in two thousand three, and it was here...
Some of the data I had on that fee, I did go back and look at the history of all the fees, and it was introduced originally in two thousand two, it only lasted two years, and then it was, it didn't, then it was eliminated for a couple of years, it was reintroduced in two thousand six at the hundred and twenty-five dollar amount, and it's been that same since two thousand and six. So I think Mr. Bernard is correct, I mean, there's certainly, we didn't want to do any of the, the fee increases, and I think we looked at the, the cost of the program at the existing fee, you know, when we look at just that direct cost I spoke of earlier, the hundred and twenty-five dollar fee was, was only offsetting the cost of the stipends by about forty, by about forty percent, so, so that was a, a factor, you know, and we did look at some benchmark in peer communities as well, like we do, you know, throughout the process, and, and we do look at comparable data, and, you know, there are some communities on this list with, you know, with fees, you know, certainly over, over a hundred fifty dollars, or in some cases, over two hundred dollars.
But, you know, our philosophy with fees has always been, and as was pointed out earlier, and it was, you hit the nail right on the head, except for the parking fee, all of our fees to offset costs of things or programs or services that we don't have to provide, but we want to give people the option, it's always been my position, that give, give people the option as to whether or not they want to pay for a bus fee, because if not, then we don't have to offer the busing, and this isn't where we want to go, but this was the philosophy behind it, same with athletics, we wanted to be able to subsidize our athletic program so we could expand the athletic program, we wanted a fee for busing so we could afford people the opportunity for their kids to take the bus, kindergarten, we could eliminate the kindergarten fee if we eliminated full-day kindergarten, so, and same with activities, there's a cost associated with providing all of these activities, so rather than say, okay, we've got to make cuts someplace, we don't have the money in the budget, we wanted to give people the opportunity to be able to pay for these services or pay for these activities, and that's how we've come to this fee schedule, and we haven't increased them in a long time, and we don't want to increase them now, in fact, I'm on the edge as to whether I'm going to approve any of them, but the, the bottom line is, we want to be able to afford the activities and the services to the community, and give them the option as to whether or not they want to pay for it.
I just, I just want to...
I would add that I think fees should be illegal, and, and it's been, I think it's been brought to court in some states, and, and I guess it's been upheld that they're legal, but to me, I guess because the programs are optional, they're considered legal, because these aren't part of the core curriculum, my argument is, these are part of educating the whole child, and if you don't have sports and you don't have extracurriculars, then the kid's not going to want to go to school in the first place to spend seven hours with a head and a book, or in front of a computer, and then go home.
And if they're optional, we want to give you the option, that's all, I mean, I wish we could afford them like Woben does in Burlington and some of these other communities, but we, we can't.
It's just that it was such a large increase all at one time, I mean, I'm going to be paying over five hundred dollars more if I go to the family cap for the athletic fee, the busing fee, and now the club fee, I'm going to be paying over five hundred dollars more in the over two thousand dollars in fees I already pay.
Fees pay forty-four percent.
So that's more than a four point three percent increase in my budget for what I'm paying for.
But if you look at the athletic budget, perfect example, the fees are the revolving account, which includes gate receipts as well, pays for forty-four percent of the athletic program, what we've tried to do over the years is expand our athletic program, I mean, since I've been here, we've added boys and girls varsity and junior varsity, lacrosse, girls field hockey, junior varsity field hockey, wrestling, gymnastics, ice hockey, JV hockey, and we've added all those programs, our participation rate, there's eight hundred students in the, in the high school, is well over three hundred students per season that are participating, and we've tried to afford them the facilities and the uniforms and everything, and the coaches they deserve, and our program has been hugely successful, I mean, the last several years, you know, and again, this is the thing with Melon Ihor and the Athletic Subcommittee, but last year we finished fourth in the Dalton standings, which is forty Division III schools, and we were the fourth most successful program, if you measure it by winning and losing, but this year we're second, I mean, and, and so, winning's important, participation's more important, and we just wanted to provide as many opportunities as we could, and the money's not in the budget without charging the fee.
I would say that we, we would look at that increase again, because it is such a large increase, again, we'd have to find the money elsewhere, not only sports, but look at what our maskers did, they went to, they were in the state finals Saturday of the Massachusetts High School Drama Festival, and...
Hundred and twenty teams, I think, a hundred and twenty schools.
Hundred and fourteen schools started, and only fourteen made it to the finals, and we were, probably there were only one or two schools smaller than us there, there's Brockton, Framingham, St. John's Prep, all these huge schools in Little North Reading, and again, it's part of, we've grown the programs, the administration has grown the programs.
Put the resources into it.
Cliff's right, though, we shouldn't have any fees, but I can guarantee you, if we don't have the fees, these programs are going away.
Or if the programs aren't going away, we're, we're cutting someplace else, and people aren't going to want to hear that, that we're cutting academic classroom teachers so that we can add another athletic team, so...
We've already stretched the academic program as far as it can be stretched, and so if you don't have the fees, you don't have the activities, and it, and it stinks.
I believe Geraldine in the back, and then to you.
Hi, Geraldine Rinaldi, Seven Bishop's Way, it seems like you're coming back to restructuring chapter seventy a lot, but I haven't really heard, like, what is consistently being done to push it forward, there must be other communities that we can collaborate with, with a leadership team to be, I mean, we're going to be back here, I think you said, at one point, two million next year again, and the, you know, is the bus fee going to be going up again, is the athletic fee going to go, be going up again, like, what, where is the pressure not being heard, and why, why is it taking so many years for it to be adjusted?
We've, we're members of the suburban coalition, and I'm the representative to, goes to that operation, and we started out around the first of the year, looking to campaign this year for increased funding, and specifically to fully fund the Foundation Budget Commission's recommendations, that's a half a billion dollars a year, and to fund it now. We put out a resolution, a draft resolution, and sent it to all of our members and everybody we knew, actually, and so far, there's between eighty and a hundred communities that have, have signed on to that, with, all of them with their school committees signing on, many of them with their Board of Selectmen and Finance Committees signing on, essentially everyone that signed on has signed on with unanimous vote of those committees, that includes all over the state, and it includes large communities and small, Peabody's on there, Walt Ham's on there, Cambridge is on there, and it is, is ongoing. Once we have the, all of that together, and there's a meeting coming up in May, where we have invited members of the legislature to show up, we've invited the governor's office and others, and, and have a, a panel discussion of that. The idea is to try to pressure as many as we can of the reps and senators representing all those communities, and we have a, something over a hundred reps, and I think thirty-five senators that are engaged through those communities. Now, it, it, it's very, it's, it's a lot like pushing a rope, actually, a thin wet rope over a long distance, it, there just isn't money at the state at the present to do anything, and they can't fund the, the half billion, we need to push them to do something to make the money, I don't know what it is, I'm not in the legislature, they've talked about a millionaire's tax, where everybody making over a million dollars a year pays a four percent surcharge on their tax, that would cover it, I don't know where that bill is at the moment, there's a couple of other bills that are out there, working away through the legislature, but we, we have worked on that, I, I personally have put quite a little bit of effort into it, so, we're, we've worked on those, on, on that end of it as well, trying to increase the revenue, because that's, just somebody said, you know, we don't have a, we don't have a, a cost problem, we have a, a revenue problem, and, and that's really where it boils down. and that's really where it boils down, we, we just don't get enough money out of the state, maybe the state doesn't have enough money for various reasons, or it's put in the wrong places from a priority standpoint, that was one of the points that we made in our appeal for the resolution, is that the state needs to prioritize, education is, is pretty fundamental, and that's the reason why Massachusetts is so successful as a state at the moment, because we have the top in the nation, education systems, we, we're right at the top and competitive internationally, that's, that's a lot to be said, we, you know, we, we're doing the right thing, and, and as I mentioned earlier, we're doing a good, pretty good job right here, in that we're right up there in, in the top tier of the, in the state, so, top tier in the state, which is the top tier in the country, and is the top competitive with international, that's all pretty good.
Just, it's, it's more than a half a billion, though, the state is, and tomorrow, for those who are on the North Reading Parent Connection, I'll post a link to the report that came out of the committee, the state is $2 billion behind based on their lack of increasing funding every year that they were supposed to fund, so, it's a half a billion plus a billion and a half.
They've been cheating us for years.
Right, so that's the issue.
It's prioritizing for years is a better way to put it, perhaps.
I have these two. Yeah, you want to just take the microphone, Diana, and then we'll pass it down.
Diana, why don't you use it, Diana?
Diana Castro, Nine Bright Away, in addition to the Chapter 70 funding, which has been ongoing as far as the debate and the need for more over the last several years, Mr. Conley, if you could address the state mandate report that you put together, and how much money we're required to spend that the state does not fund also, and, and I also think that this group needs to understand that in addition to, you know, the, the budget issues that we have and all the fundraising, that parents spend almost 1.3 million dollars in fees already, I don't know if people understand, that's a big number as far as the users are concerned, the thing, I guess, I wanted to ask is, is there money left in this year's budget that can pre-purchase and help next year's budget, how much of your time and energy has gone into making some really, or at least considering some tough choices, whether it's redistricting or regionalizing any of the resources that we have or services that we provide, how can this beautiful facility like distance learning help save money as opposed to purchasing textbooks, I, I'm just wondering at what, how, to what level have you considered some of those issues as opposed to imposing fees on parents?
Sure, I can address certainly the unfunded mandate, you know, report and question that you referenced, so, we, a couple of years ago, started an effort to look at the various, you know, state mandates, some of which are certainly unfunded, and some certainly federal mandates as well, and we did our best to compile a full list and worked with the full administrative team on what these various, you know, mandates are, and we worked on updating that list with current and actual costs, and there was a presentation given, I believe, around December of this year, where we presented that full report, it can be found on the website under, under budget section as well, and so, you know, there's certainly another challenge in developing a school budget are the, the unfunded mandates and the state mandates that we're, certainly are required to, you know, abide by, and this list, I did put together a, a list of like six or seven of the, the major, I would say, mandates, state mandates that are certainly driving factors, I will just say, in some cases, it's kind of very difficult to kind of put an actual cost figure to it, you know, it's not always a, a black and white or a cut, you know, cut and dry, but we did certainly made an effort to make some assumptions and, and put an actual dollar amount figure to some of these, some of these mandates that are certainly, you know, driving school budgets that all districts across the Commonwealth are, are certainly dealing with when they develop a budget, and in a lot of cases, as I think I referenced at the presentation in December, a lot of times the cost that is reflected is sort of an opportunity cost, you know, and meaning that if the staff weren't, if our staff wasn't spending the time, you know, abiding, you know, sending reports in and, and working on these mandates, they could be spending their time educating the students and in the classroom and so forth, so, a lot of the cost is driven by the incredible amount of time that administrators, support staff spend, and sending reports to the state and making sure that we, we abide by all the mandates and the, and the work that has to get done, so these were some examples to that, you know, first and foremost, obviously, special education, as part of that, no child left behind, certainly, you know, in regulations, we certainly, you know, provide the appropriate special education services for every child, and I think the biggest issue here is, as we've referenced tonight, is we don't get a lot of reimbursement back from, from the state, so, the circuit breaker reimbursement account is our only level of reimbursement or assistance in a lot of, you know, from, from, it's a state, really a state-funded program, we have other entitlement, there's an IDA entitlement grant, which is a little over $500,000 that we receive, and then the circuit breaker, which can be anywhere between $600,000 and $700,000 on an annual basis, is the next largest offset that helps fund, helps reimburse and help offset some of our special education costs.
Well, Mike, just, so last year we received 719 from the state, 500 from IDA, so 1.2 million, and we're spending 7 million both internally and externally to implement special education services, so we get reimbursed 1.2 million, we're spending 5.8 million of our own money.
Correct, correct, so that's certainly a huge challenge, I mean, I think it can be fair to say that a lot of these, a lot of the work certainly in this area, we would be, you know, doing anyway, you know, these are all, this is all stuff that we should and would be doing and, and allocating funds for, it's just, you know, a lot, a lot of it's unfunded, we're not getting that funding level back to the state to assist, you know, transportation, required to transport students K through six that live, you know, greater than two miles away, there's certainly a huge cost to that, we don't receive reimbursement back from the state, required to work students that are designated as homeless students, either in or out of the district and share that cost, we get some reimbursement from the state for that, but, you know, not certainly, not certainly fully funded by, by any means, there's other, you know, ELL services, English Language Learners, child, you know, children that need that support, there's a cost to that, these, you know, staffing certifications and licenses and, you know, the, the amount of, of time, you know, making sure that staff receive the appropriate licenses and certifications, we've talked about assessments and testing and, and that, you know, this is really a projection over the last few years of what it may cost to be fully online, meaning we have the proper wifi and infrastructure to fully, you know, bring an online assessment, which is going to be required, I believe, in fiscal 2019, or, you know, four, five years, five years out, so this is, this is part of that, will be part of that cost to build an infrastructure to support that, as well as staff time for training and so forth, would, goes into this number, certainly the educator evaluation process that we've undergone, this is an estimate of, of professional development needs and staffing and training, this is really a, an estimate of cost over the last two or three years that has gone into a lot of training and workshops that Dr. Daley has spent a great deal of time doing, to bring our staff up to speed to comply with the new educator evaluation process, there's various compliance reports, audits that we go through, reviews, we've been through a coordinated program reviews in special education last year, extensive process requiring an enormous amount of time by that of our special education staff, we go through student activity audits, various audits every year that require an enormous amount of time, and there's a cost to it, in some cases, to bring out, you know, independent outside auditors to help us review the practices and procedures and submit reports off to the state, the data reports, the EPLMS is a staff-driven report, SIMS is a student-driven report, we need software to adequately track the data and report out to the data, so there's a software cost and there's a, you know, a salary personnel cost of, of all these, you know, mandates that we're required to do, this is just, you know, a few examples, I took the giant report, where they make 43 items, and I kind of picked out the seven or eight highlights to reference tonight, but if you're interested in finding the full report, it is on the, the website, it has been forwarded to all our, our state representatives, you know, Brad Jones and so forth, we've discussed it in detail at finance planning team meetings, we've talked about the issues, the challenges, they've all responded to me in recently, in the last couple of weeks, saying they appreciated the amount of detail and information in there, and so it's certainly been a huge topic at various affiliations with the Mass Superintendent's, my affiliation, the Mass School Business Officials, the MAS, SC has talked about it and put together lists to educate everyone on what these mandates are, so, it has a cost to it, you know, we certainly would be, I think, doing a lot, you know, a lot of it anyway, but the, the issue is that a lot of it's unfunded. To your, to your second question, I believe it, there was one question I wanted to respond to, but my answer, I, you asked one question about-
It was redistricting and regionalization.
I think, Diana, if you had three other questions, I think, about redistricting, redistricting, facility rental and the end-of-year funds and what we could do to offset the gap for next year, I'm not happy to say that in October of 2015, so in the current school year, I instituted what I would call a soft freeze on all of the operating budgets in the district, that was a very conservative approach on my part to say to the, to the principals and the district leaders that discretionary spending from this point forward, that's very early in the fiscal year, so from July 1, which in all candor, the bulk of the ordering for the supplies that we need for students does take place over the summer to get us ready for the school year, but there are still a number of expenses that you might imagine come up during the school year, I had instituted that soft freeze in October, that's not, that's not unhistoric, we unfortunately have a history in this community of needing to do that, sometimes, that was a little bit earlier than I would say traditionally we have done that, but I don't think it's, it's, I know for a fact it's not unusual, it's happened before, but sometime in the winter is usually when a freeze goes in, and we do that because we, you know, I'll say, I got, you know, I get nervous that I'm, you know, we're, we're projecting out what the expenses might be to get us through for the year, and if something unanticipated comes up, I want to make sure that there's enough funding available to, to deal with that, so that puts a little bit of a crimp on, on what we need during the school year, but at the same time, you could look at it as though it does afford us an opportunity in the spring to use those funds that are available to do some pre-purchasing, which we historically do do as well.
Correct.
To the, to the issue of the facility rental, we are showing or projecting an offset, we're, we're, we're seeing an increase in our ability to rent this facility out already, and so we're, we're looking to capture some additional revenues for that, and we're, we're adjusting that, what would be an offset because we are seeing some, some, and I think that the interest is heightening, and I expect that that's going to continue, so we have, we have been factoring that in, it's been a part of the discussions for months now, when we look at the overall gap and how we might reduce that and anticipating how we might rent out this facility, and last year, I had asked the elementary principals, last school year, in the 14, 15 school year, to do a redistricting study, and they did do that, and I think it's fair to say in the end, there was no net gain for us, I would put it almost in the same way that we look at the, the student population to the question about, you know, what, what might we be able to gain, it was, the gains were so minimal that to, to, to go forward with a redistricting plan, that could be extremely upsetting, just did not seem worth it, quite honestly, and I don't-
You look at those enrollments too, John, for the elementary schools, they're all pretty close as far as classroom size, maybe the little school.
They're close, the middle school, the little school might be the one, but you certainly would never get to a point where you would, you know, be able to capture any savings with a facility operating, I mean, we would still always need the four, the five schools in the four buildings, so I, I hope, in answering those three questions, the point gets made as well as what Michael has, has said, that, you know, we are looking at, I think, you know, we're turning over every rock, so to speak, to see where we can be creative, but at the same time preserve the integrity of a high-quality educational program for every student, and, you know, that has to be, has to be paramount, if, if, when we talk about the fees, and we've talked a lot about them tonight, if that, if those fees are not adopted and additional revenues do not come forward through the town, we're going to be looking at personnel, and that's extremely distasteful, as we have worked extremely hard in the last several years to add positions, we have a very good strategic plan that we're ending this year, I just rolled out a new one for five, for the next five years, that really, I think, is very forward-thinking, and is good for every student in this district, and, you know, we're very proud of the work, I think everybody in this room is very proud of the work that our students do every day, they come to school prepared, our teachers work very hard, our administrators give a lot of their time to do a good job and to help our students be successful, and to, to have to think about the possibility of going backwards when we've worked so hard over so many years to get an additional guidance council at the high school, to add teachers, to preserve teachers, we took every, the two administrative positions off the table, we took them off very early, of the, of the six NIPS 2021 positions, there were those two teaching and learning coordinator positions that I spoke about earlier, we took them off the table because our ultimate goal is an administrative team, and I think the committee shares this view, is to preserve the classroom, that's where the best work gets done, it's at that grassroots classroom level, and, and I don't, I don't feel optimistic that if additional revenues are not realized, that we're not going to be having to make some very sad and difficult decisions, and I, I'm not looking forward to that, we have looked very, we have a, a position, a wrestling coach, $6,000, it's, in the, in the big picture, it's, it's so little money, but it's, it shows, I think, the, the level of detail that we have, have undertaken to try to find every single dollar to, to take off the table for savings, and also look at those places where we could maybe capture a little bit more, like facility rental is an example, it's been very challenging, and I don't see, you know, the light is not, is not bright down the road either, unless something dramatic changes.
You asked about regionalization too, Diana, we do have a collaborative relationship with the town as far as sharing services with Recreation Department, we, you talked, John mentioned the wrestling coach, as far as regionalizing, we have a number of athletic teams that are regionalized, cooperative teams with other towns, gymnastics with Danvers, hockey was with Linfield and Peabody, the wrestling with Linfield, a longtime relationship there, so we have, in a sense, regionalized in those areas, and, and like I said, the Recreation Department and the Department of Public Works and a number of other town departments work with us to share responsibilities for maintaining facilities and maintaining fields and things like that, it's probably not the regionalization that you combine districts or anything like that, but at least there's some thinking out of the box and doing that.
And to that point, the municipal side of government is facing its own challenges, we're not looking at this in isolation, we could not ask, I don't think, for, for any more collaboration than we have with the finance planning team and others in the, in the municipal side of government, it's very good, I think there is-
Frustrating.
Yeah, I was going to use the word frustrated, I think there, I think there, for me, it's less frustration as I just think we have come so far, and so, in, in, in really, you know, a relatively short period of time, and to, to start to think about making those difficult decisions that are going to turn us around is, is disappointing, you know, I don't think it's what anybody wants, but the reality of it is, and I'm very realistic about this, is there is only so much money to go around, we're, we're trying to be, and my recommendations to the committee have been and will be, that, you know, we do, we preserve the classroom first and foremost, the teacher in the classroom in front of the children is where we, I think, all share.
I just want to point out too, the healthcare costs are really sucking dry a lot of the money, the, the new revenue that we have, every year we face the same thing with the healthcare costs being anywhere from 1, 2, 3% to 5, 6, 7, 8, 9% of an increase, and I think this year was what, up to 10%.
7.8 was the final.
And that translates to about $50,000 per percentage point, and this year, the selectmen and the town administrator took the initiative to call in the unions, every single one of them, this is unprecedented, I think, in North Reading or anyplace else for that matter, they called in the unions, they said, look, we've got a problem, we need you to agree to some type of a, a modification of your health insurance plan, and they actually got the unions to agree, every single one of them, that they would adopt a, with previously, they didn't have this, a deductible for their health insurance, and it saved the town a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Within a week they did it.
And they did this like in a week, so that's $200,000 that wasn't there before, and we're dealing with this health insurance, it's unbelievable, we pay, the, the entire town pays for employees 70% of their health insurance premiums, and they pay the other 30%, so, there's a huge cost involved with that, and that, that's eating up a lot of money every single year.
Did you want to, Mike, talk about the, the prepayment of money stuff?
I think, I think Mr. Bernard covered it, yeah, I can answer.
Can you pass the mic, you're off. Okay.
Just one more quick comment, have you considered with the user fees, just adopting a formula and saying 50% of it is paid by the school committee, 50% is paid by the participants, rather than fighting every year about, well, is this the year that we go from 125 to 200, or this year we go from, you know, 200 to 300, have you ever had discussions about adopting a formula and just saying 60% of the, of the tuition for preschools is paid by the parents, 40% by the town, I, I don't know if I'm in favor of it, I'm just wondering.
That's, that's an idea, but you'd be changing the amount every year, this way.
No, but, but to adopt it, so that every year, so you don't have one year where it goes from 125 to 200, and then every year it just adjusts as the cost adjusts, the, the percentage adjusts, because it's nice to have a fee of 125 or 200 even, but most of our bills are not $200, they're 218, they're 193, and, and then you really just tie it directly to the actual expense.
I think that would add more complication to it because we need to know enrollment numbers.
Right. Right, you wouldn't know, you wouldn't know the number of participants.
I understand it's an estimate, it's an estimate every year, but you, if you're, but if you're saying you're basing the fee on your estimate, it would just be doing, again, I don't think it's going to be a huge difference, and I assume the percentage would be close to 50%, which is what it is right now, but just so that every year, when it adjusts, you don't have to restart it every single year, the, what the fees would be.
Yeah, this is certainly, you know, certainly something I've actually, you know, thought about or considered, certainly around the bus fee, I've actually seen communities do that, where they look at, you know, and the enrollment of those students in the optional busing program, but then the bus fee would fluctuate every year. What's difficult about it is it actually, quite a bit of effort would have to go in trying to project and survey and actually collect data on what the expected participation numbers are for the following year, to actually do it correct, you know, accurately, as accurately as you can, which would, there would be some challenges in doing that administratively and so forth. And it also would be some level of risk to that with the level of revenue and so forth, but, yeah.
Just an idea.
I was going to say, I just have to agree with that idea conceptually, because when you put that chart up there, you know, you have athletics, the parents are covering 45% and the clubs 60%. So, is that a philosophical emphasis on different activities? Or, I mean, I think saying 50% across the board, or whatever the formula would be, would take away that sort of, you know, perception of importance of different activities, maybe?
I think it's an effort to try to, and I'm going to use affordable here, and I understand it's not affordable to, to a lot of people, but if, if we, if we added another, if we wanted to bring athletics up to 50%, then we're talking about, talking about needing another 35,000 to 40,000 in fees, we're going to be pricing kids out of athletics. There's just no, I just don't know how we could do that. We did have a goal, Mr. Venetti and I, way back when, as you mentioned, we're part of the athletics subcommittee, to try to keep that 50/50 with the budget covering 50% in the fees. That's fallen, and I think it's fallen partly because we've added a number of programs over the last few years.
And transportation costs have gone up.
And, yeah, the transportation costs for athletics are pretty high.
Seventeen thousand this year, wasn't it?
And, and that, that, that is one of the items that's caused a large increase in, in the athletics. I mean, I, I think it's a, I think it's a logical suggestion, and I think it's something we can look at. I just, I don't know if it can be implemented, but I think it's something that, that, I know Michael will probably have the answers by four o'clock tomorrow afternoon on the whole thing, if he doesn't have them already.
And he won't use any.
Right, he won't use a computer. But I think it's, I think it's a logical suggestion.
And it could be, you could wait either just across the board 50% or even if you said with certain ones, it needs to be 60, 40, but then if the year changes, with the revenues, you know, the expenses changes, you're up. Rather than having a gap of four or five years, and then wait around, you have to then adjust it and it's such a big increase. People are saying, well, now it's $75 more for me this year versus a $15 more, it's 30, $5 more, $15 more.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, I mean, I think part of why you're, you're seeing some of the, the proposed increase in fees is because fortunately, we, we haven't had to adjust the fees, you know, going back since 2008 or '09, and we've done, we've tried, worked hard at doing that, because we've, we've tried to go the other way at times, I mean, ultimately, but it just, you know, affordability comes into play and we have to set those priorities, and we, you know, this is sometimes what we're faced with, but it's, yeah, it's certainly a, a good suggestion.
But the point is, and I think the point has been made rightly, that the fees are covering 60% of extracurricular, and that's far higher than any of the other.
But there's a difference in the dollar value, I mean, that's the point.
No, I know, but I'm just, I'm just saying it's far higher than the other program.
A contributing factor too, might be though, that a student could pay that fee, and they pay it once, and could belong to seven clubs.
Right, right.
Maybe we should charge 125 per club.
That's a good idea.
Somebody have the mic.
Yes, the users, the student fee is a one-time fee, and it's not that much, but you take a child like mine who, I don't know if he's actually going to do the club or not, and we've paid it several years, and he's gone like to two or three meetings and then decides, oh, it's not for him. And now, we're at the point where, you know, unless he's like totally committed, which he's not, because, because he has social issues, and, and so, do you want your kids with social issues not doing anything? Then they end up being kids that stay at home, like Adam Lanza, who, that's not good, but I don't want to pay the fee for him to go a couple times and then not go, and there's no buffer of, okay, well, you can go for a couple times to see if the club or the athletic thing is, is a right fit for you, you have to pay it in order to go, and it can be an impediment for some kids. So, it's just.
What's our refund policy? Just curious.
The extracurricular, I don't think there was one.
I mean, it wasn't a good fit and doesn't continue, you know, we do consider refunds.
Have you ever requested a refund? I mean, that's something I think we could consider, depending on the circumstances.
I've mentioned it at the school, but I haven't pursued it.
Yeah, I remember, it was, it was always a little bit more, we were always a little bit more rigid with the athletic fees. In fact, I think it was printed, I, I know it's printed in the student handbook, that that is a non-refundable fee unless the student is cut from a program, but with the extracurricular is not, not so strict. I think there's a case to be made for going and experiencing this and seeing if it's something that a student might want. I, I think that's reasonable to expect.
Okay, thank you.
Let me pass the mic. For the microphone, how about like, funding from industry, business partners in town, like Big Lots parking lot, or, you know, have we, I don't want the microphone, have we pursued anything like that?
Yes, as recent as last week. I made two calls.
Okay, all right. Just thinking.
We also get large, I'd say in-kind contributions from some of the local businesses, like Google, or the Google Robot, Google Robotics down on Concord Street, and some other companies that provide speakers, provide equipment, provide funding. Unfortunately, we don't have a lot of businesses to go to. Jerry mentioned earlier, Woobah and Burlington, Wilmington, they have large commercial industrial bases, and especially Burlington, I know it's a lot easier for them to get that kind of.
There are no, there are no fees in Burlington or Woobah, and again, it's based on the tax classification they have because of the significant commercial industrial base. I mean, we have around 12.5% commercial industrial in North Reading, so there's no tax classification, so everybody pays the same taxes, and there's just not that kind of a foundation or base there.
And I'll give you an example, we're right now in the process of trying to raise money to, so we can provide an upgrade to the new field that's being built, because there wasn't enough money in the school project, and we're right on the verge of raising about $100,000 to do that from in-town youth organizations and a few, and a Hall of Fame Committee, High School Hall of Fame Committee, and some personal donations. We did not want to even try to put the burden on the budget to raise that money to, to make sure that field is going to be top-notch, and we raised $100,000 without any town funds being involved. So, we tried.
Yeah. Yeah, one idea, just to explore too, on the activity fees is make it more in line with the sports fees, where you, you know, one sport, you pay a certain fee, two sports, three sports, you know, 10 clubs, more on a per diem basis versus just a flat fee. Might just be a fairer way to distribute the cost.
Oh, thanks.
Come on, Deanna, you want to go home and watch the basketball game?
Go Nova. Deanna Castor and I am right away. Just a parting comment. First of all, I wanted to thank everyone on the school committee and also the administrative council for all of your hard work and all the collaboration, in addition to all the work that you do with the finance planning team. Your task is very, very challenging and difficult, so I don't envy you. I also wanted to suggest to some of the parents, especially to parents that may be new to North Reading, we have a phenomenal community, and especially when things don't go well for people, but I do think if anyone wants to start to volunteer and use your time in a very productive and constructive way, the best thing that you could do, rather than fundraising each other to death, is to join together in collaboration with other communities. It's been done before, I believe that we were very, very successful. I am not volunteering, believe me. I'm suggesting that what was done before could be done again, and it's necessary, because not only do we have a budget gap this year, but it's very obvious it's going to be there in future years, and until our tax base and commercial base changes, we're going to be faced with these shortfalls. So, if you wanted to volunteer and work on the Chapter 70 and the, the state mandate issue and the special education circuit breaker issue, those are the major, major drivers that impact this budget in a significant way. So, I'd just suggest that a small group of people get together in someone's living room, just like we did so many years ago, and, you know, get a collaborative effort with other communities and take this task on at the state level, which is where the problem is. And I don't believe that we have a money issue in our state, we have a priorities issue, and it's up to parents to make education and quality education a priority.
And in case you don't know, Deanna, was when in Marcy, were two of the founding members of a group that was called EnRue, which was North Reading United for Education, and they were highly effective in this community. I believe the group is no longer active in, in making things happen, in making sure we were hiring the staff that we needed at the schools, making sure the focus was in the right place. And I and others here have spent lots of times in those living rooms answering questions from members of the committee and other people there, making sure that they understood what we were trying to do with the district's education system. It was a really effective group, and I think, I think another one needs to, something else needs to be formed. We have the Facebook group, Parent Connection, which is, I think, excellent, but it doesn't foster really those one-on-one conversations that you can have standing in someone's living room and having, you know, a good piece of coffee cake and a cup of coffee, so.
And Marcy, Deanna, and that group makes the, held the school committee accountable.
Yes.
Were, were accountable as to what we were doing and how we were doing, and so.
And they also did a great job with the elections, they, they ran candidate statements, I know the transcript does it, but they, you know, they ran them on their website and didn't have to pay anything to go up there and see it, they were all there. They asked a lot of questions, like 10, 11, to be honest, it was a royal pain to do it, but it was worth it because it made you think about why you were running for the position. And if you looked at those questions and you said, geez, I don't even have answers to these, you kind of said, you probably said to yourself, maybe I shouldn't be running. And so, it was very helpful, I think, to, to committee members to have to, to have to go through that process.
When Marcy calls me, I get a message, I do a lot of research before I call her back. I call her back, so I'll be prepared to answer her questions.
I just, I just run it off, right off the top of my head, no research. That's a lie.
All right. No further questions? All right, very good. Thank you all for coming out. I know it was not quite so nice, but this was a huge turnout.
This is the largest turnout we have ever had for a budget hearing, and the weather stinks, and I know you're all going home now to cheer on my Villanova to the national championship, please and thank you.
Nice job, Michael. Thank you.
Should I let them?
Good job, Mike.
Future business, next four meetings, April 11, April 25, May 9, May 23, all at 7:00 PM here in the District Learning Lab, with the exception of May 23 at the E Little School.
That's good.
And with that, I'll take a motion to Julie and Mel. All in favor?
Aye.
Perfect.
You guys don't know what you just voted on, you voted on a race.